Good morning, members of council and staff. I'm going to call this committee of the whole meeting for Wednesday, June 11th, to order. Could I have, um, members of council? You're here, thank you. No, no. Um, there, just waiting. Okay, Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Electronic roll call is starting now.
Declarations of key area interest. I see none in the room, Mr. Clerk, none online. There are no statutory public meetings. Our first presentation is by Kirsten Alor Engel, Manager of Community Safety and Well-Being. The abbreviated version is CSWB, and it's an update on the Violence Prevention Activities. Good morning and welcome.
Good morning, thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chair. Good morning, members of Committee of the Whole. My name is Kirsten Alor Engel, and as was just mentioned, I am the Manager of Community Safety and Well-Being with the region of Durham. And I am here today to provide you with an update on community safety and well-being initiatives with a focus on violence prevention and intervention activities. In 2019, legislative amendments to the Community Safety and Policing Act required communities across the province to develop Community Safety and Well-Being, or CSWB, plans. CSWB is defined as a place where everyone feels safe, has a sense of belonging, where individuals and families can meet their needs for education, healthcare, food, housing, income, as well as social and cultural expression. We know this is an aspirational goal, but I think we can all agree that this is the type of North Star for complete communities that we're all working toward. However, no one organization or sector can have all of the responsibility of community safety and well-being. We have to do this work together. CSWB planning is about wanting to interrupt the cycles of violence, or the harmful downstream impacts of the way our systems currently operate. Intervening early and in a meaningful way to proactively deal with social issues at their root, looking to upstream approaches to keep people out of harm's way. This includes culturally responsive, trauma-informed, and human-centered approaches. This work aims to collaboratively work together to cultivate a culture of kindness through education, awareness, and advocating for system-level change. Regional council adopted the Community Safety and Well-Being Plan in November of 2021. On the slide, you can see the title page of the plan. You can see how it displays the priority risk factors and tries to demonstrate how complex and interconnected they all are. The risk factors identified in the plan include mental health, substance use, criminal involvement, social isolation, victimization, homelessness, and basic needs, and experiences of racism. The goal of the Community Safety and Well-Being Plan is to ensure we're getting the right services to the right people at the right time. We know that community police officers are increasingly being called to respond to complex situations that are noncriminal in nature, involving vulnerable individuals, such as someone experiencing a mental health crisis. Situations such as this could perhaps be more appropriately addressed by another service provider, or through a coordinated, integrated approach. CSWB encourages communities to work with various partners across sectors, including police services, to identify and address local priorities in the community before they escalate and result in situations of crisis, for example, crime or victimization. CSWB planning provides police with added support and integration with their community partners, not only through crisis response, but by developing and implementing proactive programs and strategies that improve the social determinants of health, such as education, housing, and mental health, alleviating the long-term reliance on the criminal justice system, as well as the financial burden of crime on society. Fighting crime head-on is only one part of the equation, an important part, but we also need to address the root causes of crime and the complex social issues by focusing on social development, prevention, and risk intervention. Community safety and well-being cannot solely rest on the shoulders of the police, who are a critical partner and embedded in all levels of our CSWB framework. It is a shared responsibility by all members of the community and requires a truly integrated We like to share this image from the province, as it helps to communicate how our various types of work come together through four levels of risk mitigation, with a shared goal of building communities where people feel safe and have their needs met in a diverse spectrum of ways. If we think of this as a scale from the most serious in the middle, that is your 911, your fire, your ambulance, an incident has occurred and a response is being triggered, and we move out into those outer rings of policy development, community planning, and a restorative community response, they all play an important role in mitigating risk and supporting our communities. Research has also shown that developing and implementing strategies and programs that are proactive and focused on social development, prevention, and early intervention reduce the financial burden of crime through cost-effective approaches that have significant returns on investment. An economic evaluation completed by the Ministry of the Solicitor General has shown that preventing just one career criminal can save society $2 million. CSWB is working with our partners, with DRPS and agencies across the region, on the following key initiatives: our Strategic Advisory Group, the Durham Region Situation Table review, a youth violence prevention strategy, a community healing protocol, an intimate partner violence and gender-based violence action plan, our capacity-building training series, our CSWB funding program, and the review of our CSWB plan. For more information on these specific projects, I encourage you to check out our information hub at durham.ca/cswb. In addition to these structural bodies of work that will provide a roadmap for collective action, much is happening concurrent with these initiatives. The following slides will provide tangible examples of how this work is having a meaningful impact in community today. We know that protective factors in a person's life help to prevent criminal involvement. These may include equitable and sufficient access to community services, supports, programming, opportunities and employment, family support, adequate and sufficient physical and mental health, positive relationships with mentors and peers, equitable and culturally appropriate services in schools, healthcare, police, and justice systems. Utilizing federal funding, CSWB has had the opportunity to mobilize the following projects. Mary McKinnon's LEAVE program has played a critical role in violence interruption and intervention by providing high-risk youth with mentorship, recreation access, and pathways to education and employment. Through goal-setting, personalized coaching, and consistent engagement with a caring adult, participants developed life skills, self-confidence, and a sense of purpose. Youth who were previously disconnected from supportive structures gain new access to opportunities, including college and trade program applications, and part-time employment, effectively reducing their risk of entering or re-entering the justice system. LEAVE's ability to meet youth at their stage of change and provide tangible, individualized support enabled meaningful behavioral shifts and the replacement of risky activities with constructive, future-oriented goals. As a result, participants are now better positioned to contribute positively to their communities, strengthening public safety in Durham region. The Durham Community Action Group delivered the Youth Hub project, an initiative focused on violence intervention. The Youth Hub engaged approximately 40 diverse youth from across Durham region, including those on the margins of the child welfare system. Through consistent participation and strong family engagement, the hub created a safe, supportive environment that fostered inclusion, trust, and empowerment. Youth gained tools for self-expression, conflict resolution, and leadership, particularly through talk-it-out circles and youth-led discussions on current affairs and racism. The hub's emphasis on equity, mentorships, and skill-building positioned youth to make positive choices, improve mental health, reduce risky behaviors, and become proactive contributors to community. IFRADA Institute delivered the Alcoma Well-Being Project, an initiative focused on violence intervention. IFRADA's culturally grounded, trauma-informed programming reached over 3,400 children and youth, offering critical intervention and prevention supports for Black, Indigenous, and racialized youth and their families across Durham. Through psychotherapy, mentorship, in-school programs, wellness workshops, youth access safe spaces to process trauma, strengthen emotional regulation, and develop life skills. Many participants were engaged or at risk of entering the child welfare or youth justice systems. Behavioral support helped interrupt escalating emotional distress and self-harming behaviors, while mentorship and advocacy platforms empowered youth to lead, heal, and envision alternative futures. Parents and caregivers also received training to understand trauma responses and improve communication within their families, which are key elements in breaking intergenerational cycles of violence. AFIWI Groove School delivered the Drums Over Guns project. AFIWI Groove's drumming-based life skills program reached over 5,000 individuals across Durham region, including 1,800 children, using rhythm as a powerful tool for healing, connection, and emotional expression. Through partnerships with community agencies, schools, and other organizations, the program provided culturally grounded, trauma-informed spaces that fostered engagement and resilience. Drumming workshops served as more-than-music lessons. They became interventions that helped participants relieve stress, build self-awareness, and develop nonverbal tools for emotional regulation. Testimonials revealed transformational outcomes. Youth described learning to express deep and complex emotions. These experiences contributed to violence prevention by promoting self-esteem, reducing isolation, and fostering strong relationships. Durham Family and Cultural Center delivered the Reinvent Program, an initiative focused on violence prevention. The Reinvent Program reached over 60 youth through a four-week workshop designed to disrupt cycles of justice system involvement by fostering emotional healing, accountability, and resilience. One-on-one sessions proved especially impactful, allowing participants to address the root causes of risky behaviors, such as anxiety, addiction, and grief, in a safe and supportive environment. Reinvent provided youth with tools to make conscious, positive choices and reduce their risk of justice system involvement. The CSWB Secretariat has also mobilized funding to support culturally grounded youth safety and well-being initiatives in partnership with six Williams Treaty First Nations. Just over 1,200 youth participated in programs such as archery, fishing, and hockey, which offered safe, supportive, and identity-affirming alternatives to harmful behaviors. These activities not only build life skills, physical health, and emotional resilience, but they also foster cultural pride, mentorship, and intergenerational healing. Participation in team sports and traditional practices reinforces accountability, self-esteem, and a strong sense of belonging, which are key protective factors against substance use, isolation, and justice system involvement. Through the micro-grant program, skilled residents across Durham region with deep connections to their communities were equipped with access to mentorship and funding to undertake their own child- and youth-focused prevention and well-being projects. These involved 268 children and youth. Ten projects addressed known risk factors for youth violence, such as mental health, social isolation, lack of mentorship, limited access to safe spaces, and gaps in after-school programming. The vast majority of these projects have continued to expand and operate today. The impact of their project activities cannot be overstated. Caregivers have reported significant positive behavioral and attitudinal changes amongst child and youth participants. Thank you for inviting me here today to share this work and a few of our CSWB project examples with you. In doing this work, we ask ourselves, what is the type of community we want to live in? CSWB works to mobilize community impact to increase social cohesion, where we look out for each other and create a safe, supported community. Prevention work is less expensive, and it allows police and other first responders to focus on the critically complex work of policing. As demonstrated in this presentation, partnerships with DRPS, regional and area municipal staff, and community partners and rights holders are critical, and we are so thankful for their collaboration. We know we can't control or do everything, but we can focus on what is possible and work with our critical partners across Durham region to soften the impacts of these wicked challenges. Thank you again.
Thank you. We have a number of questions. We'll start with Counselor Crawford.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for your presentation. I'm curious, in one of the slides, I think it was Drums Over Guns, you had mentioned transformational effect on the students. How do you follow, what is the follow-up through these programs that you've, like, it's great in the time, right? So, these children are young, so how do you, what is the intent to follow up through, to see if the program worked, if the children are still in that transformational kind of state? Like, what is the intent for follow-up?
Thank you for the question. So, we remain engaged with these agencies in a number of different ways. So, one of the first and direct ways that we stay engaged in terms of outcomes with these projects is through our reporting requirements that are connected with the funding. But we are also looking to really grow a community of practice and a network of service providers and grassroots organizations, our community partners across the region, that directly provide intervention and prevention support to youth. So, CSWB has established the CSWB Strategic Advisory Group. We meet monthly. We have member about 40 organizations that provide direct services to youth, and so we continue to work with them so that we can continue to listen and learn from them about the impacts that these types of programs have on their youth and on the communities that they serve, and also where are the gaps? Where do we need to focus our efforts, our investments, and our attention to make sure that the work that we're putting forward directly impacts those communities who need those supports most?
Thank you. Mayor Carter.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Thank you for your presentation. I'm just curious, the Community Safety and Well-Being program, you have mental health, substance abuse, criminal involvement, social isolation, victimization, homelessness, basic needs, experience of racism. You spoke a lot about youth. I don't see anything, what other programs do you have? Maybe you could talk a little bit about the mental health and the homeless issue outside of youth.
Absolutely. The purpose of the presentation today was really to specifically talk, really targeted and zero in on the violence prevention and intervention initiatives that we're mobilizing, and they happen to be funded by a federal program called the Building Safer Communities Fund, and that funding is really specific to upstream intervention specifically targeted to youth. So that's why you're seeing a really heavy focus on this work mobilizing those types of initiatives. However, much work is underway under the other priority risk factors as well. So as an example, from a policy or programmatic level, we are in the process, it's a legislative requirement that municipalities review their community safety and well-being plans every four years. So we are working closely with community to identify really detailed outcomes, actions, and indicators under each of the priority risk factors. And we do that by working closely with our steering committee, which is comprised of system leaders from across the region, including representatives from council, and is co-chaired by our CAO and the Chief of Police. We also have an area municipal working group, an internal working group, which includes representation from social services and health, all regional departments that specialize in those direct programming, such as street outreach, the primary care outreach program, our M-HOP, the street outreach teams, so that we can continue to receive long-term population-level data, but also real-time, street-level information from those that are serving those communities directly.
So, will one of your presentations be able to be focusing on that? This is, this is very much youth-driven, right? This is, all that you've spoke about this morning is about youth-driven activities, which is great. It's wonderful. So, your next presentation, would that be on the other elements of the Community Safety and Well-Being Plan?
The goal is to come back to this committee in the fall and provide a more comprehensive look at the Community Safety and Well-Being Plan and its targeted actions and implementation activities that would address all of the priority risk factors from across the age spectrum.
Okay. And have you set up a matrix in regards to how you're going to measure the success or failure rates in regards to this plan? So if it's mental health, and we have, I don't know, what are the, you know, 30% of the population, you know, so we have, let's say, 24,000 people that are struggling with mental health, are you going to have a matrix in regards to what we're implementing and how we're impacting those 24,000 people, and what our success rate is, and those kind of things? Are you gonna, are you gonna be able to report on that?
Yes, excuse me, yes, that is our goal. We are also working across the province. CSWB sits on a province-wide community of practice. Durham region, myself, I chair the GTHA/CSWB Working Group. So not only are we looking to measure our performance and the effectiveness of our programs and strategies within Durham, but we're looking to utilize best practices from across the GTHA and the province.
Will that information be shared with council so that we can see the comparison group that you're involved in, so we could see, you know, the different levels and success across, and then figure out what the success looks like, what challenges look like?
That would be an ideal goal for us, and we're continuing to work with those partners to see what they're comfortable releasing in a public space. In particular, the province, or the Ministry of the Solicitor General, that is the ministry that's mandated these plans, they have continued to signal that they will release suggested evaluation metrics, and they know from their data and from their work across the province that, for example, mental health, as you've mentioned, is a significant challenge. It's not a surprise to any of us, and so we are hopeful that we will receive that information in advance of our fall deadline, so that we can incorporate those components and share and show across the province and continue to bring it more and more specific to Durham region.
Will the data help you be able to solicit funding and investments from the provincial federal government to be able to address your findings?
We hope so, yes. That is a big part of this, is being able to tell the story about how we advocate strategically and invest appropriately.
Okay. I just have one question, this Grove School initiative, you had 5,000 people participate. How long of a period was that running? Is that like a year, is it two years, is it a month? Like, that's incredible. 5,000 people participated in Drums Over Guns.
Yes, sir. They, the program launched last year, late last year, but if you met the individuals who run the AFIWI Groove School, you wouldn't be surprised to hear that number. They're incredibly passionate, incredibly motivated, and they have also been able to leverage opportunities through March break programs. They're running a program over summer as well, so that they can continue to expand their reach even more than they already have.
So is that 5,000 individuals then? You're saying that they've participated? That's, that's like, some of the numbers here are quite impressive in regards to the participation rates. And I'm, when I saw the 5,000, I thought, wow, that's absolutely incredible. And the one, the Violence Intervention Institution, they had over 3,440 individuals in that. Like, the numbers are quite impressive, so well done. So that's incredible. So, thank you very much, I appreciate it. Look forward to your next report. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Counselor Kerr.
Thank you, Chair, and through you to Kirsten. Wow, what an amazing, I'm over here. I know, that's a voice from the wilderness there. What an amazing array of programs and services, thank you. Two questions. What's the funding source for this and the size of the budget? And that's the first question. And the second question is, how many staff are involved in the delivery of this, and how many may be volunteers? So let's start with the funding source first, please, and what the budget is.
Yes, thank you for the question. So currently, this program is funded entirely through a federal program called Building Safer Communities Fund. Unfortunately, it is a time-limited funding opportunity that is ending March 2026. The funding for, through that program, has been approximately $1 million a year over, for four years.
Just for us?
For Durham region. GTHA municipalities all received funding from Public Safety Canada through the Building Safer Communities Fund, and it was the amount allocated per each municipality was determined by the federal government, and there wasn't an opportunity to negotiate.
Thank you. And how many staff, paid staff, do you have involved in this, and how many volunteers?
Currently, in the CSWB program, I have seven staff on my team. Half of the staff on my team are contract and funded by the Building Safer Communities Fund. We do not directly, retained by the region, have any volunteers. However, the programs that I outlined, they themselves may have some volunteer involvement. However, through our agreements with them, we look to make sure that they are hiring staff and paying them a living wage.
So you're telling me that you delivered all this amazing array of programs with only seven staff? Wow.
I have an incredible team and an incredible director.
Thank you for your service on this. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. So, that exhausts all the questions, so thank you for the detailed presentation.
Thank you for having me.
Members of council, there are no delegations. We have a series of reports. I'm happy to take a mover for all of them, and we'll do polls if that is, that is okay? Okay, so move by Counselor Chapman, second by Counselor Makai. That reports number 7.1, all the way to 7.6 are now on the floor of polls. Okay. Counselor Lee?
Thank you, Chair. 7.6, please.
7.6? Okay. Mayor Foster?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Quick questions, comments on 7.3 and 7.4.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, that exhausts. So on the remainder, so that would be 7.1, 7.2, and 7.5, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? In opposition? Seeing none, that carries. So we'll start with 7.3. Mayor Foster?
Pardon me. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick question to staff. We've got some details on the tariff actions update. Have there been any tangible changes? So, you know, have there been contracts that we have opted not to sign with US-based companies? So have we seen any difference?
So, if I may, through the Chair... So, if I may through the Chair, it is so uncertain out there in the vendor sector. So, what we have done is put in the bid documents upfront that they're not eligible. So, with respect to fully US-based companies, so I don't have examples for you of where we have, I'll say, shut down agreements with companies because we're working with them. A lot of companies didn't, don't even necessarily know what their US content is. So, it's still very much a work in progress, working with each and every vendor as they look at their content and where they get it from in order to work through it. So, I don't have an example for you today. We're trying to catch it upfront before we enter into any agreements.
Okay, thank you for that. Not surprising, given the nature of contracts and the length of contracts, but it will be interesting to see the impact that we can have, that we are not just a paper tiger. We are looking at layoffs across Durham Region as a direct result of the actions of the American Administration. You know, and while you, while you do not wish ill for anyone, and while we do not wish ill of workers in the United States, the pain has to be shared so that we can get to a resolution that we need to get to. So, thank you for that, and I will look forward to hearing more about this. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else on seven point three? Seeing none, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? In opposition? Seeing none, that carries. Can you push your button again, Mayor Foster? Thank you. On seven point four?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A quick comment, and Nancy, I asked you this earlier, so I think you may have a number for me. Great report, thank you, and good to know. I think the report identifies since 2004. We've been doing this policy in place since 2019, which maybe made it easier to comply with the province. On page fifty-seven, you indicate that the dollar amount of regional assets per household is ninety-four thousand three hundred and fourteen dollars. Can you tell me what the development charges levied? And I, this is, this is a broad, broad, broad question. I know it's apples and oranges and not precise, but on a new build, what would we charge for DCs?
So, regional development charges on a single semi is about seventy-five thousand.
So, if Durham Region were one big green field, to replace the infrastructure that DCs would pay for would be ninety-four thousand, and we're charging about seventy-five thousand. Is that broadly fair?
So, through the Chair, being very broad in that interpretation, yes, if we are one farm field and we built the entirety of regional assets, that's a broadly fair comment.
So, I wonder if we point this out to the province, that we are doing it more efficiently, building value in, and if they need to see where development charges go, that's the number right there. But thank you, and I do appreciate that it's pretty broad, but thought it was worth a note. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to seven point four? Seeing none, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? In opposition? That carries. Seven point six, Counselor Lee?
Thank you, Chair. So, we got this as the addendum. Just a few questions. Just to clarify, Talon, the numbered corporation, they provide an overlay to the Maximo Application Suite for the region? In a sense, they kind of cater the Maximo Application Suite to the region's needs, is that correct?
Through the Chair, yes.
So, how many years are we into the current contract, then?
Three years in, but this may be the second five-year term. So, like, our, sorry, our current contract would expire in 2027, and that's when we would have the next five-year term.
And then, are we looking into any other vendors? Like, I'm assuming, based on, you know, what I read, Talon's kind of, we like them, right? We kind of go with them, we enjoy what they've done for us, and to go with another third-party vendor to cater to the region's needs, it would require a lot of like shifts in the way we use programs. Is that in layman's terms, correct?
As well, like any other big programs, like, you know, once you get in, you're pretty much locked for this. We've been using this for about ten years. Talon, which used to be another company called Createch, you know, they've changed names, but it's the same longstanding relationship. We've had them as an exclusive vendor for IBM.
So, I guess my question is, we like these people, we like these people so much, we're actually negotiating early into our existing contract with them. Why are we limiting ourselves to five years? Why don't we do a ten-year contract where we can, you know, ideally, you know, there's no guarantees, but lock in pricing? You know, we like this product, we know this product, we know the vendor, like, why aren't we locking in longer? Why, like, because I assume then, going into next, in two, three years, we'll want to renegotiate again, like, why don't we just cut that out and negotiate longer?
Yeah, we are going for two plus five, right? And with an option to do another five. So, we, it is as long as I think we could. And again, this is really like an opportunity we are trying to leverage. As this, we would have waited till 2027, and we usually do a five with an option for another five. And it is for all practical purposes, a long-term contract, so it's two plus five with an option to do another five.
So, pretty much, I just want to recap, it's kind of our procurement rules that prohibit you from negotiating even longer than two plus five, like, not, we could do two plus ten, but our procurement rules kind of say we have to negotiate in five-year batches, is that true?
I don't know if it's a purchasing rule. For IT, generally, that's the way it's been, like, you know, we have done five and a five-year extension, but I don't know about corporate policy, but for work software like this, we've done that.
So, if I may through the Chair, there is no limitation in the purchasing bylaw that says you can't go beyond a certain number of years. However, it is best practice because we just don't know how much the world will change, especially when it comes to technology in such leaps. So, certainly, we want a long enough commitment that we get payback on our investment of this vendor, but there is no rule that says it can't be longer, it's just best practice when you're talking, you know, contracts. Maybe the world will change and there will be, you know, other really, really great vendor opportunities down the road.
I guess, I just think, you know, there's right now room for seven point three million in savings. We could go even further if we like these guys, but I suppose we'll kind of follow the rule of thumb that we've been following. Okay, those are all my questions, Chair. Thank you for the questions.
Okay. Thank you. Seeing no other questions on seven point six, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? In opposition? Seeing none, that carries. We'll move on, there are, item eight, there are no members' motions to be considered. Item nine point one is a confidential report, 2025 COW 21. It relates to negotiations with Metro Links. Can I get a mover and a seconder, please? Moved by Mayor Ash, seconded by Counselor Shahid. The item is now on the floor. Is there any member of council wishing to go into closed session? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? In opposition? Seeing none, that carries. Members of council, Mr. Clerk, that is the business for the day. Sorry. Counselor Kerr?
Thank you, Chair. I wonder if you allow me a small bit of latitude here. Tell me the most appropriate time to ask for an update on the Regional Revitalization Plan. Can I do that now, or is there more appropriate time at council? When would be the best time to ask for that update?
It is coming to council in June.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, that is the business of the day. So, members of council, I'm looking for, sorry, you have to push your button. So, the business would be to have a motion for adjournment, Counselor Shahid, looking for a seconder, Counselor Wu on adjournment. All those in favor? In opposition? Seeing none, that carries. Thank you very much to staff, and have a good day, members of council.